The following program is sponsored by John Chatchis Insurance, your local farmer's insurance agent located 800 Avenue G in Edie, and brought to you as a public service by KGTV, Channel 10 in Ely, Nevada. Special joint meeting at the White Pine County Commission, Ely City Council, Ely Municipal Utilities Board, and the White Pine County Water Advisory Committee, October 9th, 2019.
Just want to do a couple housekeeping things real quick. The women's restroom is located through this hallway here, so if you walk out into the lobby and take a right down the hallway, the women's restroom is at the end of the hallway, and the men's restroom is in the bar. And if you haven't signed in and you're a member of the audience, please do so at the front table before you leave tonight.
Good evening, and welcome to the special joint meeting of White Pine County Commission and the Ely City Council and Municipal Utilities Boards and White Pine County Water Advisory Committee. Would you please all stand and join us in the pleasure of the meeting?
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the foundation of our generation, in the invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and as we're accustomed with White Pine County Commission, we begin every meeting with a moment of silence, prayer, meditation, anything you want, so the first minute of the meeting, we'll give a little moment of silence, thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a public comment. Is there any public comment, anyone in the audience pertaining to this national meeting? So please come forward, identify yourself, and speak with your mind. There will be public comment at the end of the meeting as well, and it'll also be part here for discussion today, please.
I've got shit labs in the morning, I may not make it to the end of the meeting. My name's Henry Bogler, I live in North Spring Valley. Every morning I get up and I see where Southern Nevada Water Forest starts. The worst neighbors on this earth are very arrogant, bully-pulpit. They go to BLM meetings with the entire cadre of lawyers. BLM's scared of them, they love doing anything they want. But I do know this, the aquifers in this country have been in negative discharge, recharge, since 1920, whenever the canyon and juniper started walking off of those mountains. My fields are lined with old ditches that haven't run a drop of water in 35 years. Not a rock. It's not that them old boys with the walking plow and set of view thought they could dig ditch and water and cut their water there. Our aquifers are going down. And if they want to spend $15 billion on a pipeline, they should spend at least that much money, open enough, and put more water into the recharge, so we can remain whole. I think it's the biggest boondoggle, it's the biggest environmental holocaust, bar none. And I hope I get to live to see my words come true. It's only taken me 50 years to put a little modicum of success together, and I would like to continue in White Pine County. Been there for 35 years, and it's my home. And what time I've got left on this earth, I'd like to be able to enjoy it. Thank you.
The Wayne Spilsbury. Hey, there's nothing in there. Okay, I'm Delane Spilsbury, and I-
Excuse me, I just talked. Please, hold on for a second. During public comment, we, as standard in all open meetings, we limit the first public comment to three minutes, or as close to as we can. So, that being said, please proceed.
Yes, I want to congratulate the community on this gathering here tonight. We get all these people together, it's the first time I've seen cooperation like this, and I was born here 82 years ago. Thank you very much.
I don't know how I'm gonna carry it, I've been working all day. I spent two hours sleeping and the rest of the time working. I weigh 560, I weigh about 338, which isn't bad. They don't need to take the water from here, they can redo their sewer water.
Who say your name?
Rocky Pastorino. My dad was here from 1911, and my grandpa was here in 1873, but there wasn't a will. They can take that sewer water and recycle it if they have to, or they can run a pipeline to LA and draw saltwater and recycle that too. They don't know what they're gonna do with the brown, they probably go up to Lake Mead when it's empty. I don't know what they're gonna do with it. They don't need to take the water from here, you know? They break through like that. My dad and stuff, she knows, because my dad owned that ranch, she sold it. Such people make this place, same thing with these folks. They don't need the water, just gonna stay here. I was a Navy SEAL long time ago, that pipeline they put in, it won't be their home, guaranteed. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Any other public comment, if anyone has a public comment? Please come forward, state your name.
Good evening, I'm Anne Loe, county resident, I still have water shares. What I don't understand is here, 10 days, 2 weeks ago, I had two gentlemen at my house checking for water on their well, because of some of the legislation that's been passed. So explain to me how we can have our wells meet here, we're talking about restricting water use, but yet they're gonna pump water from south. I don't understand that, I don't understand how we can be short on water throughout the state, but yet it's okay for Clark County to take our water. As Mr. Bogler said, the junipers have caused a lot of the issues, and they don't care because we're a small community and we can dry up. They don't care, but I care, you know, this is where I live, this is where I choose to be, and it kind of goes back to when I found my father. The minority is supposed to have some say in this business, and just because we're the minority, we need to say, pick a round, we talk this, and I don't appreciate it.
I got one more thing to say, it's all about money, you know? It doesn't matter about the people, they just want your money, you know? When it comes down to the people, we're all the ten of them. And all they care about is the mighty dollar and the water right now, and then when our drums out, they'll give it somewhere else. It's all about the mighty dollar.
Any other public comment before we can start the meeting? I appreciate the comments, please come forward, state your name.
Rick Spilsbury, and I've been watching this for a while now, and gave the conclusion that desalination is a better idea. But running a pipeline all the way from the ocean to Las Vegas would be very expensive, plus pumping their water uphill would be very expensive too. So you don't have to do that. What you can do is you can generate power somewhere in Nevada, and trade that power for desalinated water, well, use that power for desalinated water in desalination plants down in California. They get more water there, Las Vegas gets more water out of the Colorado River in the trade. I'm sure that we can work, you know, it could be worked in a good enough deal that California got more water than Las Vegas would get out of the river. So it could be, it could be worked out some way where they could deal, make some kind of a deal, that everybody would be happy. And if they do that, they can generate the power on Lake Mead, which is even a better idea. It won a design award from Almonte, and if you generate the power on Lake Mead with solar power, you're also running barges, not barges, but floats that you put them on, that covers up the water, so there's less evaporation. And if there's less evaporation, then that means there's more water. It's likewise with desalination, more water. If you take a pipeline and take it to somebody's groundwater, there's less water. That's the good part about desalination, is there's more water. And it's an idea that has been bouncing around for a few years now, but it's usually getting ignored, if I didn't send it out to Water Authority. They claim they already do D-SAL in Mexico, and they don't need to do that, or I don't know what they said, but they, they pretty much have been known as over the world. And I just wanted to say that there doesn't have to be a pipeline anywhere. By trading solar power for desalination in California, you can just get more water out of the Colorado River. They can get just more water out of the Colorado River. So this can be, this whole water grab can be avoided.
Any other public comment?
You know, that's a good idea, but, excuse me, we've had your, so we've got to have people speak.
I'm Arlen Darnier, I'm a resident here, here in San Fran. And when I was a kid, I grew up in mining town in California, and this is in Southern California. And one of the things that, when you study the history of California and mobile water, how the water got down to Los Angeles was pretty much they stole it from Kern County. And when they built the aqueduct and did that, they bring the water situation up in Kern County, changed the environment, and pretty much ousted all the farmers. The town that I came from, and why I finally left, one of the things was, is that they started stealing the water from there, and they put all the farmers out, and then eventually Los County's had a deal. And those people from Los Angeles had more money and more clout, and so we were eventually outvoted. I've watched this happen to a lot of small towns, places ended up drying up. And I came here, and I kind of hope to be able to stay here. I hate to see the same things happen to this area. And I don't see, so far, any kind of good thing coming from having the water here, transported to Vegas, and that's basically what that's for. They need to govern their situation, they need ration water, or stop with all of the fluffy things like plantings and all that kind of stuff. I don't see any benefit coming to this area, while I have the water shipped out.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Raise your hand, state your name.
My name's Dan Chris, I was born and raised here, and I've been around a little bit, I've seen the most of the climate in San Fran, California. The San Fran River is dry, that represents for Los Angeles to water. I'm recently in Las Vegas, and I understand there's a huge demand for water in Las Vegas. They're growing, they're growing every day, they need more water. They don't need to get enough, like, as stated before, desalinization is a much cheaper option than fighting these small communities. This was a huge, we get everybody together, and it's big. We're all trying to fight the same thing. I've watched springs in the country around here, not from the drawn or water, but from climate change. Our springs are going dry, the lack of water hole out here, it's dry. They used to be watering out all the time. If they start pumping our water from here, let's see, the water, the aquifers, even more, the effects are gonna be huge. I want my descendants, I've got a young son, he's got a young son, and I want them to be able to enjoy the streams, the creeks, what loo we have here, without having to water table, or water table. I've seen what's been done in California, and it's a shame. But I understand there is a need, there, you can, there is another way to do it. But desalinization with California make trade. We'll pay, we'll help pay for your desalinization, you give us our water from Lake Mead. That's just the need to trade. And it's a lot cheaper in the long run for everybody concerned. I, my, educated opinion, but, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We're all, we're open for public comment. We'll not deny anyone that probably commented, all right? A last one, one more time, is there any public comment, or we start speaking?
I can't hear you, sorry.
I'll do the best I can, I got the mic here, so we'll be giving that over to the, present to yours in just a minute. But to begin this meeting-
Do we have more comment to come?
Excuse me?
Do we have more comment to come?
I ask, anybody who wants to make a comment right now, there'll be other comment at the end of the meeting.
Better talk now.
Well, I'll tell ya-
If you want, please come forward and state your name.
My name is Delphine Kuchel, I moved here in '05. I'm from California, seven generations over there, and you're letting our state get just like them. We have water in this county, or state, and this end, and you have a beautiful state here. If Vegas is built in a desert, why do they have swimming pools, fountains, everything under the sun, hot tubs? I can't even have another well to put down to have grass for my horse. But you want to let them take all of our water. Why don't they put a pipeline to the ocean, and put saltwater and a desalinator in it? They got other options. Or quit letting everybody's dog go down there and put all this extra stuff in. We are entitled to our country, and our part of it, and our water. And I don't know why I have to share with Vegas. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Still open for public comment, I'm sorry if you didn't hear me. Any other public comment before we open the meeting? One more call, please, if anyone has something, you're more than welcome to come forward. Hearing that and seeing that, we're gonna move on. On your first item, this discussion only, is the introduction. We're gonna start with the introduction with the members of the board, the Utility Board is right here on the podium. We're gonna start over there with the Mountain County Council, which please stand, state your name, and what board you're on, and we'll go through there, all the way over to the Ely City Utility Council.
I'm Cody Andrews, with the White Pine County Water Advisory Committee, Chair.
I'm Steve Carter, time out, Water Advisory Committee.
Rod McKenzie, on the Water Advisory Committee, I'm the chairman.
Gary Curia, White Pine County Water Advisory Board Member.
Bill Lutz, White Pine County Water Advisory Board, with the members of the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority.
Jill Perez, White Pine Water Advisory Committee, also with the Ushuaq Tribe.
Jane Bybee, White Pine County Commissioner.
Lori Carson, White Pine County Commissioner.
Richard Howell, Chairman, White Pine County Commission.
Travis Coda, County Commissioner.
Ian Bulles, White Pine County Commissioner.
Jim Allwirth, Ely City Council.
Nathan Robertson, Mayor of the city of Ely.
Hans Beer, Ely City Council.
Ernie Fiers, Ely City Council.
Bill Lurbe, Ely Utility Board.
John O'Flaherty, Ely Utility Board Chairman.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Councilwoman Beecher is on the phone, also.
Councilwoman Beecher from the city of Ely is on the phone. So we'll proceed with the second item, item two. Item two is discussion only. It's an update regarding the water related issues pertaining to White Pine County and the state of Nevada, including a film, fact sheet, presentation, analysis, discussion with elected officials and board members. And the three presenters will be Simeon Herskowitz, the attorney, Connor Rorick, who is with the Great Basin Water Network, Abby Johnson with the Great Basin Water Network. We're gonna try to limit these to 40 minutes per item, so if you would, Kyle, would you take over for them?
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate it. Well, thank you all so much for being here, and I especially want to thank Nicole for helping to organize this, she has been great to work with. And I think that exemplifies how the county and officials in this community have treated the water grab for 30 years. There has been undeniable opposition to this fight from officials here, and, you know, I think we're all here to say tonight, you know, just keep up, keep up the work on that. I think the one thing that we have seen is that we may not agree on everything, but everyone can agree that the water grab is nothing but bad news for the people and the future, and the lands and the resources of White Pine County. I am, I'm the executive director for the Great Basin Water Network, and, you know, our folks have volunteered countless hours of their life, many of whom are sitting in this audience right now, to help in this effort to stop the pipeline. And, you know, I've only been at this since December, but I want to say, you know, along with the officials, I'm inspired just by all the chutzpah and moxie of those who have given so much to this fight. And before I turn it over to Abby Johnson, the board president, you know, I just want to say that, you know, I was two years old when the Las Vegas Valley Water District filed for the applications, and they came in here and they probably thought they were just gonna steamroll White Pine County. They thought they were just gonna steamroll you all. But they haven't done it, and that's why we're here today. And that's why we're gonna be in court on November 12th. And that's why we need everyone to just remain united around this issue. It's, it's all about local control. White Pine County should never be a water colony of Las Vegas. And I just want to say, you know, thank you again, and thank you to all who have given so much to this effort, you know? I, I hope that for many years to come, I can come to this community, I can see Hank out there wrestling with sheep, I can go get a beer at the border inn, I can, you know, go, go to Cleve Creek and, you know, watch the water flow there, and, you know, I just, I hope that we can, you know, keep White Pine County the way it deserves to be. So, thank you all so much for your commitment and for your willingness to do this. And now I will pass the mic to Abby Johnson, Great Basin Water Network Board President.
Thank you, Kyle, and hello to everybody who's here tonight. So I am Abby Johnson, I've been the president of Great Basin Water Network since 2011. And I am thrilled to be in the position of being able to sort of pass the baton to the next generation. And that being said, the most important thing that has happened is 30 years, no pipeline, okay? We've been fighting this for 30 years. My son was one year old when this thing started, and we still have no pipeline. And that's a, that's a big deal, that is really a big deal. And, you know, the thanks go to all of us, to all of you who've been with us, one way or another, and to the White Pine County Commission, present and past, and to the other elected officials in the county, who really pulled together and worked with sometimes unlikely partners, through thick and thin. As some of you know, there were times when White Pine County didn't have any money to pay for an attorney. But we did. And then there's been other times when White Pine County has been the lead, and we've been so appreciative of that. And now that we've hired a full-time, paid executive director from the next generation, of course, we're expanding our budget a bit. And I would be derelict in my duties if I didn't mention that, you know, we've had, we're upping our game, and because we have Kyle on board, and he's doing so much for all of us. I also just want to say that this project has gone so long, gone on so long, that it really is a 20th century solution to what is now something in the 21st century. It's obsolete, it's old thinking. And we've, we've outlasted them for 30 years, with more on the way, with our court case, our hearing in November, and onward. And so we've proven, we can do this, we will continue to do this. And with that, I'd like to introduce, if I may, Mr. Chairman, our estimable attorney, Simeon Herskowitz, who's been with us from the start, and who has worked so hard for us to win every fight, and to think about every strategy, and to just make the legal magic happen. And I know some people don't think there is any magic in legal things, but in this case, there is. Simeon is with Advocates for Community and Environment, based in Taos, New Mexico. And we've been working together since 2005, I remembered. And so I'd like to turn the microphone over to Simeon, who's gonna give us an update on what's going on with the legal fight. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let me start by asking, where would you all like me to be positioned to address everyone in this room? Just here, facing you, or in the back? This is good, okay. I'll be happy to answer questions from people, so I'll turn around and face you when and if you have questions for me. And I'll start off just addressing all of the officials here. Thank you very much for scheduling this meeting. Thank you for inviting me and making the opportunity available. To address you and the members of the community who are interested. I will try to be brief, which is sometimes challenging for me and other lawyers. But I just want to bring everyone up to speed as to where we are in the legal fight. And as Abby said, the legal fight has been going on for a long time. What some of you may not be aware of is that we have won repeatedly in the courts. Despite that, we've had to continually go back before the Nevada State Engineer and relitigate, if you will, the Southern Nevada Water Authority's applications for this big pipeline project. This last time, which was the fourth time we were in front of the state engineer, we received a ruling finally from the state engineer denying all of the Southern Nevada Water Authority's applications in Spring, Cave, Dry Lake, and Delamar Valleys. Now, that's a great outcome. It's also the outcome that the court decisions had been telling the state engineer more or less to reach. They actually had sent it back to him and said, this is the standard apply, this is what the law requires in Nevada. It's quite clear in the statute, but I won't bore you with that. And if the Southern Nevada Water Authority cannot produce the evidence to demonstrate that the water is actually available, and that they can develop it without conflicting with the prior appropriators in the basins that would be affected, the people with senior water rights, then they cannot have these applications approved. There is no valid basis for their rights. Despite that having been essentially laid out as the standard previously by the courts, the state engineer had continually found ways to rationalize granting SNWA's applications, including the water rights. This time, we pretty much had the state engineer in a box, and that's why we got a ruling denying the applications. But make no mistake about it, the state engineer was unsatisfied with having to deny the applications. We think that's merely just a reflection of the political pressure that the Southern Nevada Water Authority and its political allies have always been able to bring. So the state engineer denied the applications, but included in his ruling a kind of argument as to why maybe the court should be interpreting the law differently and changing the standard to allow him to approve these applications. In addition, he went on, and despite the fact that there were no longer any valid water rights or applications after he denied them, he approved the Southern Nevada Water Authority's 3M Plan, or Monitoring Management and Mitigation Plan. Now, that's a very controversial part of the case, and we had won previously on two separate occasions in court on that issue. The reason being that the Southern Nevada Water Authority has attempted to argue that even though there is proof of the availability of the water, or the possibility of developing it without causing impermissible impact.